All right, I hereby call to order this meeting of the Economic Development Advisory Board. As I was just saying, yes, inactive membership in our bylaws indicate that or is based on active membership. And so do you have a form based on that number? So we're good to move on here. So I'll just go right into the welcome. Which I guess interested, are there any conflicts, ventures, disclosures, or expertise communication? Seeing none. One of the next agenda items is to be heard, are there any citizens to be heard today? Seeing none. Any introductions, I suppose, I know, has Rachel met everybody here yet? Rachel, do you want to come right over here really quick and just introduce yourself?
We have another lollipop situation. Hi. Rachel Bartlett, do you have minutes for these meetings and do administrative support for economic development?
Yeah, so if you saw the really good concise to the point minutes that Rachel's put together for this meeting. It's all her doing, so anyway, thank you so much, Rachel. She's our new administrative support staff in our office and has been doing an awesome job. Yeah, Rachel rocks. Yeah. Next agenda item presentation, did any of you have any presentations?
Actually, um, so sorry, I wouldn't mind.
Okay, yeah, sure, okay, I'm August, Economic Development Director.
Ben Alter, Economic Development Specialist.
Rob Walker is private citizen, I'm the Chair of the Board of Moab Community Childcare.
Well, Kelly? No pressure.
I'm Kelly Thornton, apparently technically challenged. I'm the Workforce Development Division Manager for the Moab Landing Offices of the Department of Workforce Services.
Awesome, and Jasmine, do you want to introduce yourself?
Jasmine Duncan, Mayor of Castle Valley.
And as I said before, I'm on the County Commission, but I am filling in for Mary McGann, who's the long-term representative here. Thanks.
And that will be a new change for awesome. We're going to move right on ahead here to approval of January 11th, 2022 minutes. Did everybody get a chance to see those, or should I hold them up for a quick look?
You want to throw them up?
Sure.
I went back through my email and couldn't find today's stuff.
And did we send? Maybe we just missed that. Yeah, I'm sorry, I couldn't edit here if that's not okay, we're going to review them right now. Do you need to send the document over at all?
Or we could table as well.
That's true, we could just table the minutes, you want to take some time?
I don't mind, I don't mind taking a minute, I never, I don't understand the whole point of doing minutes that closely. It's like, I was there, like, unless someone wrote something horrible about me, maybe that I want to review it.
It's a good point, um, would you like to motion to table the approval of meeting minutes?
So moved, I so.
Okay, there's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Am I voting? Or not?
On this body, good question, let me pull up my reference sheet.
Am I just observing?
It doesn't act, it's just not, it's not clear, I think, I think you are voting number.
Okay, and I vote yes.
All right, easy enough, minutes next time, thanks for all. Moving on to the next item here, selecting a board chair, we haven't had a board chair or vice chair for a while, Gabe was vice chair. And obviously he moved on to greener pastures, and then I've kind of just been running the board in the meantime. I guess something I would want to say before we kind of I think might have changed slightly on this. But I think this week, some conversations about resurfacing from January's conversation about consolidating the two economic developments, launched diversification boards. You know, I think that sounded like a good idea, and then we decided, well, maybe we should have each board just focus on different things. And just kind of proceed until they go through a master plan process. However, I think now seeing how last week's gone, it's clear that consolidation would actually be really effective. There's a handful of really contributing people on each board, and I think the mandate can be achieved by a unified body, and so I might my plan is, and I'd love to hear people's thoughts on this, is before the next month, so not at next week's commission meeting, but the commission meeting thereafter. And probably going to do a kind of bylaw review and formal consolidation of the Economic Diversification Advisory Council and the Economic Development Advisory Board. And if that, if I was going to do that, I would hold off on going for board chair and a vice chair today, because we have the bodies. Any, any thoughts on that, any strong disagreements on that?
Definitely makes sense to wait on, on chair and vice chair if you think we're going to make some changes.
Yeah.
Is it, is there a reason why you can't be the chair? Seems like the reality is that's, is there a comp?
I don't, I don't think so, on this board, I am voting number seven.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like you're, this, what I understand about these, these committees is that kind of like, we're, yeah, we're helping advise. You got you, you and your team, so it seems logical to just like, you're kind of doing it anyways, unless for you, it's like extra work. You'd rather have somebody run with it or something like that, or you want some kind of like separation from without you, but.
I think eventually for the consolidated group, having a chair helps me basically have that, you know, civil society input captain that's outside of our office that's helping, you know, kind of run things a little bit. I think, I think it's useful in that way. Yeah, I mean, I basically have sharing.
Yeah, I just think because, for instance, like, the agenda, one of the board, the chair's jobs is come up with an agenda. And I feel like, you know, you're, we're all, yeah, this is a pretty part-time, you know, board for all of us, as opposed to like a working board. So I feel like coming up with the agendas and knowing stuff, you would then, I feel like we'd be in the best position to do that. But that's like the chair board, yeah, I meant to continue.
That's the role of the chair, is managing the agendas.
Yeah, yeah, so that'd be my, whatever, just aside there, but it sounds like we should just move on, right, do another time.
Um, I was like, I did have a question, question about that, so I think you explained this to me a couple of months ago, but, you know, so one of the two boards is a local thing, you know, started by some ordinance, maybe in 2019 or around there. But enough, but the other, the other board is mandated by the state, right?
That's correct.
And so one, which one is meeting right now, is it the state one or the local one?
This, this, this board is the outcome of the state statute that's governing the rural county grant program.
Okay, and then, and since, so I'm, have you read the state statute recently about just who, who's on this board and who's not? And is it, is that any obstacles toward consolidating?
Not at all, it's very straightforward. And I think if anything, the current bylaws are a little out of whack, so I think a consolidation would be quite easy, actually, but I, and I think it would probably most likely, I mean, I talked to Mallory, went about like best practices, but I'd probably resolve the diversification body and modify this one, because this, this body is the one that has, you know, the statutory requirements built into it.
Okay.
Anyway, I'm not concerned, but it would be one, one feature.
Okay, well, that makes sense to me, thanks.
And I also just want to recognize Carly Castle has joined us.
Hey, everyone.
Representing Moab City. No longer Assistant City Manager, I changed that on my or even the acting manager. Straight up. Stars, stars among us.
I did think I was like his assistant. Meetings through me.
Because it more starts with the word assistant.
Cool. Super brief recap is basically tabled minutes to the next meeting, because folks hadn't had a chance to review, forgot to send them out. And then we put kind of selecting a board chair and vice chair, but discussed the fact that I think we are going to consolidate our two boards before the next meeting, and so would, that would come up at that point. So I would entertain a motion to table the selection of board chair and selecting for vice chair agenda items to contribute.
I still move.
No second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Love Rob, okay. Now we're at the agenda item, discussion of childcare roundtable and next steps. I don't know. Who wants to kind of take this, I can provide some context and let you run a check.
Find some context, and Rob can tell us how, what I can check that way.
Okay, so at the last meeting, you know, we really honed in on this focus on childcare support and trying to figure out, you know, if there is, if there's a need for increasing the supply of childcare availability in Moab. And that would be kind of second after housing, it was a really crucial workforce development concern. What would be the most effective, you know, use of $80,000 that the county has to the rural county grant program or more, or slightly less? But, you know, how do we start that conversation? And last week, we scheduled on Thursday night, the Mark, a little roundtable with current operators and providers of childcare in the community, we got about maybe three or four private providers. We had folks representing Moab County Childcare, Andre Graham and Rob and Tess, and then we also had someone from Department of Workforce Services manages the childcare incentive program.
The subsidies, yeah, subsidy enrollment.
So that was an invaluable asset, so we had people from the community, people involved in existing government programs, and people who are really trying to work on this issue in general, and then we also had folks from CK then, with which childcare is often an appendage to getting domestic violence kind of support and services. You know, if you can't, if you're hit somewhere safe, then you can't take care of yourself, right? So those were all the people that were there, we spent almost two hours having a really, really great conversation, and I think we learned a ton about kind of what would be good first steps this year, next year, and beyond.
I might have missed it, did you mention that the existing providers were there?
Yeah, so we did, yeah, so we did have existing private providers, and that ranged in various ages from the Montessori school and Montessori preschool program to a handful of other kind of home care and center providers. So I don't know, Rob, you want to take the next?
Yeah.
Of what was talked about?
Sure, well, yeah, I mean, I'll just, like, I feel like we all probably, I mean, I'm coming up to speed on this issue too. I don't have a background in childcare. I just sort of dived into it a year ago when I wanted to see if I could make a bigger impact on something that wasn't not that much going on, on it, and just to reiterate, you know, the main thing being is that there's a big opportunity to get money from the state down to Moab for subsidized spots, so that's the kind of unique thing about this issue. And the other thing that I think maybe it was Ben who mentioned it to me, is that if you compare this to housing, is like important, you know, kind of like, you know, required things for economic development. You know, there's no, there's, there's not really a pushback on this, like, there's not like NIMBYism, you know? So most people kind of like would, are for it, so the coolest thing is, is that because, you know, the programs are in place for the state, once you kind of can get this going, I think it could be a cool thing that would get broad support on, just to start off, I will talk about the meeting, but I want to just kind of like set the table a bit, like what the opportunity is, and this is some things I said at the meeting, so I guess that's kind of a recap, is that there's only 100 spots in Moab for childcare currently, and there's about 100 kids born every year in Moab, at Grant County. And so based on a survey I found from Workforce Services, three quarters of families need childcare. So that means that there's about 450 needed spots for kids under the age of six, and so we have 100. And obviously, some people over 60 need childcare as well, in some cases. One thing we found is that a number of the existing providers are only partially or not using the state subsidies because of, you know, essentially there, I think it seemed to me, I would explain it as that they're super busy providing service. They have plenty of people knocking on their doors that will just pay cash, or that don't need the help to pay for it. And they're so stressed out and busy working that they haven't filled all the forms and gone through it for different reasons. So I think there's opportunity to increase that, but just to kind of like finish setting the table here. You know, each spot, a typical, a three-year-old is 750 a month, so it's essentially nearly $10,000 a year that the state would provide in childcare assistance, so with 450, that's, you know, roughly $4.5 million of money that would, could come from the state of Utah. It's very easy to qualify, relatively easy, as long as you demonstrate need and your income is, you know, not ginormous. A family of three, for instance, that makes under $62,000 a year would qualify. So four and a half million dollars that could come down here, most of that is currently not coming down here. And that would, you know, majority of that will end up going to salaries of childcare workers, because that's really the main cost of providing care. And then, as you think about the economic impact of that, it's obviously a little trickier, but it's going to be a multiple of that, so if, if one of those spots, one child now allows one parent to now go to work and make, say, $40,000 a year, that works out to $16 million in potential new income for families with care. So those are big numbers, and what's funny is that, you know, we had these, we had, you know, a good chunk of the providers there with us, there's maybe 10 right now in Moab, maybe eight or something. It's hard to tell whether some are still operating or not, but I think there's around, call it, yeah, maybe nine on average, I'd pick a number. So a very small portion of people are currently providing kind of this like really important service. And so we started this, this meeting, and ultimately, we're talking about how we can incentivize more spots. And one of the big takeaways from this, this conversation and just talking about this with, I've had some meetings just with Ben in August, is that, you know, maybe before we look to expand or try to incentivize new people, let's check in with the existing providers and see how they're doing. Because, you know, we all know that's probably been hard with COVID for them, because, you know, kids get sick all the time, parents don't want to bring their, parents, people don't want to have a bunch of sick people running around. So one thing, big takeaway from the meeting for me was that I recommend that we really shore up the base of our existing providers first, before we try to incentivize a new person to start. And I think also, I learned a lot of different things about their struggles, which I didn't expect, didn't realize would be struggles. So the meeting I thought went great, everybody really liked it, I mean, to the point of like, like, people, at the end, and they stayed an extra hour, and just like milled around and talked. I think a lot of the providers hadn't even known each other, a lot of them mentioned that, you know, they really appreciated talking with adults, you know, because they spend their whole day with infants and kids. So it was really, it was kind of just like a low-hanging fruit thing that I feel like Ben really pushed to do, so, great idea. So that's just like the rough sense, so let me talk a little bit more about what they need. And what I'd say is that unfortunately, right, is that the existing providers, our existing 100 spots are not like the most secure spots. These are individual people often having children in their homes. I think they make pretty decent, if they're doing it, if they, I've heard some examples of people making a very high wage per hour when they kind of get that working, but seems like a very hard job, these are not like secure positions, so I think we should.
Hyper now too.
Yeah, so I guess what I mean is like, you know, it could get worse, like, it, like, I mean, in terms of like, I don't think, I think we will be able to help it, but just the reality that, yeah, there is, they're on the borderline burnout, and they talked about a number of their issues of what, what, you know, what we could do to help them, or what are the hurdles to having more childcare in this town? Because it seems like academically, there shouldn't be an issue, just open it up, and you can charge $1,000 a month and, or $1,200 a month, and then the state will pay 750, and the parent will pay 500, or whatever, you know, you need to do. And it doesn't seem to be happening, so some of the main, the main hurdles that we, that we, and then we have a few ideas for programs to kind of help with this, was that most situations are an individual, you know, who's working by herself and may have a husband working, there's a few of those examples, or have one employee, it wasn't, these are not deep benches, so when one of them gets sick or has an errand they want to run, that's like important, I mean, they're kind of out of luck, and it's stressful and difficult, they have to call the families and say, sorry, you can't come in today. Zachariah Levine was actually there, I'm sure most of y'all know him, and he was describing how, you know, as a result of that, what you have is that some providers aren't open full-time, so he moves it, he brings his son to three different providers to get 30 hours a week for his wife to work, so like, and that's, so it's, I don't know if that counts as three of the 100 spots or whatever, but you know, it's not great, it's not great. So what can we do to make it a little, make their lives a little easier? One was this idea of like, you know, why don't, why isn't there some kind of network of a substitute, or just like some kind of support where, you know, if there's an emergency, so there could be something where Moab County Childcare, you know, could put someone on our staff, and, you know, they could essentially rotate through the 10 providers, and depending on how much you wanted to fund that, it could be someone that shows up every, once every two weeks, or, you know, or more, or once every month. Because you want the kids to get acquainted with the provider when there is an issue, so it's not just some random person showing up. Like, I remember how disruptive that was, when we were actually sort of like in actual school, so imagine when you're a young child, so that would be one. They also mentioned little obvious things like, you know, kids ruin your home, which I had no thought, I didn't think about that. So they're complaining about like, you know, the constantly having to clean up, and it's just sort of like hard to get excited, or it's just a stressful thing, it's like, so you know, it seemed like one of our, one thought or program there would be pretty easy, was we could work with someone like that local real clean, green, clean company to just sort of like, let them know, this is more of like a let them know they're appreciated and provide some funding for, to keep their houses, which they're offering up, you know, keep them clean. A number of them mentioned pay as an issue in recruiting, just like all businesses right now, and so it's hard to compete with service jobs that are, you know, are, childcare jobs can sound like it's any easier, but it's certainly lower pay, because you don't get the tips. And then, what was I going to say, so there was also talk of help with, there's a lot of paperwork, I don't, I know the paperwork that we're going to have to do at Moab County Childcare, we're going to run a center, which is like a higher role than a daycare in a number of ways, I'm not sure of all the exact ways, but we have to basically keep records of every single thing, you know, like, and, you know, and then obviously, every kid, and he has a little chart of, you know, what happened that day to them, you know, like, what do they eat? So I got the sense that the providers are, a number of them are pretty stressed out, and that there's some, and I'm, I'm pretty excited personally to like, but I feel like I can be helpful to them in, in like, sort of my private citizen capacity or hybrid capacity between being at Moab County Childcare as well as being on this board, to sort of give them some adult time, get them some counseling, maybe help with some administrative stuff if we can. If we could try to have some money set aside for, you know, some substitute slash extra help, maybe some cleaning things, start there, and then the nice thing about, I think this is, one, I don't think it'll cost that much, and we can try them out at small levels and see how they go. And then, once we improve the quality of life for the existing providers, I think that'll help us now recruit other new providers as well, so, you know, the, that was kind of like a presentation roughly, in terms of like a recap of the meeting, like, I guess I can answer questions, but you know, it was a good conversation, it was about an hour and a half long, there was a lot of mingling after, and the other thing I'd mention is that, so I feel like there's like four kind of prongs of things that I, off the top of my head, I'd want is programs that we should do, which would be, you know, substitute slash emergency staffing, cleaning, support, administrative consulting, help. I'm not fully sure exactly all the administrative work that they'll need, but there's definitely, it's not zero. And then I think the other fourth one would just be very low cost, sort of like social networking events for them, like, once a month or something, we buy them a pizza and a case of beer and rent the mark, and let them commiserate over their shared path in life.
I have kids in the GCH.
Yeah, yeah, um, yeah, so I mean, it was a great group of people, went really well, everybody was like, really friendly, there was a lot of husband-wife teams, like, yeah, and I think they all really appreciated having, you know, like, you know, August and Ben, and like, they're like, hey, we're like, this is like, you know, it's important, you guys have been doing all this, and let's give them some more help, I'll stop there.
And if I could, I just real quick. Rob deserves a ton of credit for getting this organized, and I thought, this went so well, we talked about this in the last advisory board meeting, and it was something that just took shape really quick, so thank you, Rob, and, you know, one thing that I think kind of governs a lot of what Rob was saying in terms of proposals. At the last meeting, for those who were there, we talked about this, I think everyone had this light bulb appear over their head, that's something we want to do, is incentivize new centers and new providers in the area. And something that we got from this is that securing our base and supporting the people who are already doing this is probably just as important, if not more important, in the short term right now to focus on. And at least I personally felt that at the roundtable, no one seemed to express the sentiment of, I'm about to stop providing childcare because I hate working with kids. All of them really love what they're doing, if they're having issues keeping the lights on, it's because of how challenging it is to do from a financial logistical standpoint. But they really like what they do, it was very encouraging for me to see, and I'm really excited to talk some more about the different proposals, Rob, throughout, and other ones that you might think of, just to see how we can kind of shore up the base of providers that are already in the area, and then have them help us work on creating those new providers when we get to that step. Yeah, any initial thoughts?
I really like the idea of supporting our existing base. Right after our last meeting, I got a flyer in the mail that was either, came out of the advertiser, was just a flyer, and, and it was, I believe, from, I don't, it was an agency that was putting out trying to did everybody get that in the mail?
Is this the one that was saying like, you know, like, money for, money to help start childcare?
Was it from childcare resource and referral?
It might have been, but it just made me realize, okay, there, there are other things going, other, you know, agencies trying to help incentivize this. And so if those things are out there, and we're, we're supporting like a support system that helps people understand that these things are available, but also provides the support that Rob's talking about with making it less challenging. So the more things that are going to make it easier for people to do, the better. Because it's great that there's funding, but if it's so, you know, if it's such a hurdle just to get the funding, or, you know, to do the paperwork to get the funding, or just the day-to-day stuff of, yeah, if I get sick, who's going to take the five kids that I watch, and how does that work?
Yeah.
I think, so childcare resource and referral, does some of that, they have incentives, sometimes it's cyclical, but they also provide the technical support, so I think it would be really good to, to pull them into this whole process, so as not to reinvent the wheel, so they wouldn't provide, you know, a case of beer and a pizza, maybe we could do that, but they could provide help with filling out the paperwork, getting the certifications, those kinds of things, and I think, so I think they're really an important partner to pull into this process, because some of that might be in existence, and we might be able to help them connect with new providers or additional providers who don't feel like they're connected or whatever.
Kelly, are you, I missed that, was that care about childcare?
Care about childcare, there's a, there's a, there's an office in Price at USU that has a contract with our Office of Childcare that provides this support, and though they provide some grant funding, sometimes they'll do inspections, they'll help people with the paperwork, they'll, they'll actually do a lot, and a lot of existing childcare providers are familiar with them, because they also provide the continuing education that's needed to continue having your license, so they, they connect in that way. They provide classes locally to do that, they had been using our building for a few years, actually, I think they're doing it at USU now, but they But they, some, most of the providers are probably familiar with some of the things that they offer, so. But I think they'd be a good group to invite to any future kind of meeting.
Yeah, there's definitely a number of, seems like people and things that are around that exist that will. Totally incorporate and put all together and have like a better resource list. The other thought, I think I, I think I mentioned, or just to hit it home. A good thing and a bad thing is that we have so few providers that I feel like it's gonna be, it's easy for me. My thought is, let's not. Let's make this very like hands on and let's know all their names and, I mean, I'll know their names and, you know, work on their individual issues. And as opposed to just, cause obviously, you know, a lot of people are, they're just swamped with, and so they don't. They don't wanna, you know, follow up and click all the different things. You kind of need someone to sort of. Push them and say like, come on, like this is gonna be good, like I'll help you with it. Here's a little administrative support. I'm thinking of like, you know, the Montessori school, talking to Jessica, just like totally working seven days a week and saying how. Hard it was, and she's not qualified for the subsidies and was just kind of like, you know, like, like, when am I gonna do that? Like, how am I gonna, like, my brain is like handling so much right now. So. Yeah, there's a lot of existing resources that we could kind of tie in and not, not duplicate, duplicate things or reinvent the wheel. But I think what we can do, that'll be, that will, that probably is not being done is kind of just like the on the ground, like in the community. You know, support where. Yeah, just very high touch customer interaction kind of thing. Like, if you only have a few, we have like nine important people to keep happy, I feel like.
Being able to do that through mobile childcare, like extra staff or.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, initially what we're talking about, I feel comfortable that I can handle. In terms of like setting up these programs or administering them, also working with maybe, being, Ben were talking like maybe. Ultimately, it might make more sense to be in their department, to have someone. There's someone that we want to hire that, I don't have any work for her yet until we open her doors, so. It'd be great to, to have her be like a substitute like tomorrow, you know, and we're not tomorrow, but yeah, to get.
Maybe Monday.
Yeah, like, yeah, so like, as of now, I feel, yeah, it could certainly become a larger thing, but. To me, it doesn't sound like that many people to, obviously also not all night are gonna like be super into it or want to. Put a lot, you know, some of them are all, we're gonna be in good situations. I'll just say. Hey, awesome, we'll take the money to help clean our center, that's great. But others, I'll actually probably, I could see, you know, being on their site. Maybe like an hour or two a week or something like that. And, you know. That was a big lightbulb that went off for me in this meeting was I was like, this is what I'm gonna do more of than. Cause my, wearing my hat as board, as chair of the board of the Web Key Childcare. We have a director, I'm managing her right now to getting up to speed on things and getting opening. But there's a lot of free time I still have, so the answer is like, for now, yeah. And maybe we can also like. Work it with August's department if he wants to.
And that was, care about childcare. I took a picture of the flyer and just found it. Do you want the phone number that was on it?
No, I'm in touch with them. Yeah, they have a program, I, I don't know how good it is. I, I imagine it's probably pretty good, but for instance, like they give you money to open up a new center, but I think you have to demonstrate. You have like no other means. So that wasn't irrelevant for us and. I don't know, my gut, we'll look into it. I still think like, maybe with this, with our grant, that we should still, we can still have. An allocation of support for setting up a new center. I think if anything, it was up to five thousand dollars max, maybe it was twenty four hundred dollars. And like a fence would cost five thousand dollars, so. I think if we put a pot together like today, let's, in, in with this money for incentivizing a new center. I would, we'd be so excited if anybody took us up on that. And it'd be very, it's gonna be very hard to convince someone to do that. So that's why I feel like let's first like shore the base up and then we can kind of go from there. Because I think it's gonna be, I think, I think it's easier to lose an existing provider than to gain a new provider.
Have we looked at like the cost that evolved of what some of these things that you're talking about would be? What would, what would it cost to have a, what, you know, would we need to pay a substitute to?
Yeah, let me.
And I think that the cost to pay the substitute, I think the providers would be happy to pay someone to cover. It's, it's, it's just that there's not a qualified trusted person. Who knows the kids and knows the operations of that particular facility, who they feel like, okay, we can have that come in, we can trust this person. So it would be, I, I think on that side, it's almost like whether it's a dedicated person who's working for my childcare. Who is first in all the current. Folks who are operating and can have that trust with all of the clinics or. All of the, all of the sites so that they could go out, be that stuff. And then I think the other part of the. That, that is this kind of other part, which is the workforce development pipeline, which is connecting. You know, DWS, USU, high school, et cetera of like. You know, the first step to recruiting to get new potential home businesses or otherwise, it's just building the pool of people. Who are aware that this is a way that they can make a living, that could fit their potential need and are trained and, and like excited about it. So. I think part of that substitution network idea was almost this idea that's an opportunity to build a network of people that we can then pull from. Recruit to build new centers in the future.
You're also gonna need space at times because some of the, I mean, if they're taking a day because it's a sick day and their home is there. Is there space? Like, you can't just bring a substitute into their home when the, the family that lives there is sick. You know, so I don't know how that would work. Like a substitute space even.
Yeah. That would be, that's, that's a good point. It's tricky, I don't have a, I mean, it would be nice if. To have a space, you know, you, you know, you need to have, the hardest part is like a fenced outdoor area, so. It'd be hard to just have like slack capacity like that. Maybe we could do, I mean, we'll have to figure out how to like the details around these programs. We just literally talked with providers for, I mean, not including the after time of the meetings, two hours, two and a half hours, so. This is super early stage, we'll have to say, what's the most? I learned so much, so whenever you learn so much so quickly, it kind of like reminds you that you don't actually know what you're doing. You're that like, well, okay, I should probably like slow down and make sure I learn everything that there is to learn before we just jump the gun on, on certain specifics.
Does anyone on this board even have kids?
A child.
We're, we're, we're three childless, three childless men here. That could work with the one I'm thinking of. The woman I'm thinking of, like she has a home, that's, I don't know if she has a fence, but. Yeah, that could, that could work. My thought was that, you know, if we pay her twenty dollars an hour or something like that, or her annual salary might be forty. Or forty five thousand dollars or something max, that either all of that or part of that, we could. And I wasn't even thinking about what August said, which is that yes, I think the providers would be happy to pay or pay part of it.
It's just sort of like something they're part of, is a subscription or some membership into it. It's like, when I have a sick day, I can kick them over to you as a certain birthdays or.
My thought also too is like, I assume it wasn't clear is that, my thought is that, like, ideally, I would, if I was a provider. I'm thinking about what we could offer them. It'd be great if we said, here's an extra pair of hands once a week. You can go do your laundry or something, you can just like, you can just have a little less stressful of a day once a week. And, you know, maybe you can't afford to have someone full time, but this is something that will provide, it'll make you feel appreciated. It's not a lot of costs to add. Maybe we do it every two weeks to start with, or, you know, see how it is. My thought, yeah, that was, so it wasn't just like, I'm sick, I'm in a emergency. Like, I mean, as many of you know, like, I'm, I'm early retired and like, it is amazing how you can spend your whole day doing errands. And like, if you actually just like do an errand and like, don't rush through it, like, it takes a while. And I think it's nice to have. It's, it would be great to be able to let someone actually get some of those checked off, some to do list items, a certain portion, just to make them feel. Those other days when they are working, which is a lot, that they're doing like really important work in the community that. Really, no one else, very few are eligible to do right now.
Well, and if you're working five days a week on weekdays, it's hard to schedule anything, like just your banking or your. A doctor's appointment or whatever.
Yeah, so these are all, these are all things of how we can, there's that expression, like it's either to, it's easier to alleviate suffering than to like create happiness with. And I feel like let's, you know, so we can just, let's just go with the pain points and how can we address some of those?
Well, and I think the other thing too is that we're at a point where, you know, in terms of the timeline for the Royal County Grant stuff, where. We need to basically spend this money. And then at the end of the summer, we need to apply for next year's money. And so I think. At the beginning of the summer, yeah. So, but, but it has to be submitted by the end of the summer, yes. So, and so we don't have a clear timeline on that yet, but, you know, I think something that would make sense and narratively. Follow through is, you know, we're starting with whatever we end up spending on this eighty to a hundred thousand dollars or something. And as simple as we're providing this to my childcare under these kind of program guidelines. And there will be ongoing conversation with the board and with the childcare with the providers. As to how to actually build that out. And then that kind of just becomes a subcommittee of this board, basically. To ensure the follow through, that that like funding goes and happens if the programs go forward. And then, and then kind of we can think about, you know, next year as we're applying for this, making that a sub line for next year and saying. Once we kind of supported this, now next year we can start thinking about maybe building out some more capacity.
What, what is there, the existing, you said there's eight to ten? What is their capacity to expand? So instead of creating new, but just giving them resources, I know when it's hard. Is there this limitation staff? Can two people work at a home? Or like, I don't know what the regulations are like.
Yeah, so there was one, there's one provider that is expanding and they're like redoing their basement, so. There are restrictions around size, so the house, the house that needs to be, you need, I think it's thirty five square feet per, per child. You know. Yeah, yeah. So, so I think a lot might be, and there's also, there's also rules with ratios with how many kids you can watch. But it's pretty flexible, I mean, you can do, so. Yeah, I, I think they would, I'm, there might be some opportunity to expand if they had some staff. And I think a lot are just a single, you know, one person. There were two examples where two women convinced their husbands to like quit their jobs. To like work with them, they were like, there's so much demand here, like, just like help me out. And it seemed like those, one of them might have been going on for like. A year or less, they were like more newer things. So I think one had just expanded and one like was planning to expand and they're redoing their basement. Trying to make that work, you know, have a bathroom and things. So I'd say is there might be some opportunity to expand. But I think like, probably it's sort of like the home they're in, and I imagine it might. Yeah.
We can identify that.
And certainly, and certainly we can incentivize that. Like, my initial thought for this, when, like, like, mine, yeah. The very first thing I thought of was, I was like, you know, we're, August was like allocating eighty five thousand dollars to childcare. And I was like. How could that money be spent? And I was like, well, people can, are starting daycare centers to make extra money. Oftentimes, it's like, it's like a single mom or, or, or a parent or, or someone who like wants to make extra money, they, they have no other option. They have to watch a child, so they're like, here's the only job I can kind of do, I can make money doing this. So if, and. And so the thought was that we could sweeten the pot slightly with saying, oh, if you watch, if you are open a certain amount of time, you'll get. Five thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars as an incentive for the first year. Especially because like, I think once you open a center, once you open a daycare center in your home, like, that's, that's a job you don't like switch from easily. You have to like, basically, all your neighbors have to say, like, go find somewhere else. So we can just kind of get them over that hurdle, kind of like convince them, hey, this is a good idea. Do it. I think that was my initial thought was like just write checks, which we still could certainly do. But this to me, all, this all seems better because it'll be hard to convince people to, to do this. And I think it'll be. I think a better, more effective way would be, imagine like, a few of these kind of meetings from now, by, by these meetings, I mean, the ones we had with the childcare providers. We invite the providers and we say, because providers are gonna be here and they're gonna tell you how great this job is and how much support the county gives us. And we're gonna be mentors for you, you know, here's your curriculum, you know, like, you know, so, yeah.
New people, for sure. I, I like that. Let the, that the current providers convince other people that it's a great idea.
Yeah, one of my thoughts was, yeah, we have, we could have even like, yeah, they could, there could be like a mentor mentee thing where they get reimbursed for their time, a certain amount of time to. You know, cause ultimately, right, it, it's, it's, we need to convince individual people to do this and to open in their home. And that's like a big step. There's a lot of people on the fence. And so I think, you know, we can work to get a few over and even if we just get a few a year, they'll make a big difference and. And as we have, and we can show them the data in terms of like, here's how much you can make, you know, and then we just have to basically sort of sugarcoat the reality of how hard the job will be. And get them excited.
Well, or for the flip side is show how much support there is for these providers.
I'm joking, yeah.
I know you're kidding, but, but I think that it's on the same token as, as thinking through this, through the social community. Aspect of, you know, we're creating these really human relationships with these real people providers. We're making their lives hopefully a little less stressful so that they're able to do the thing that they want to do. And, you know, provide some relief vows that, and then it's like, then, then, cause if, if I'm already burned out, I'm not gonna tell someone to do this. But, but if I'm like a little less burned out and I feel supported and seen and valued. Then maybe someone who's interested, I'd be like, well, there are all these resources. Yes, it's hard. No, it's not the highest paid thing. But this is something that is our community values.
Yeah, my quality of life, my quality of life can be there while I'm doing this job. And my work-life balance. And I think that's, that's important to everybody and increasingly so. And I, so. I think that's the message.
And the money can be really good. I mean, like, I have one example was just this one woman, she was, I don't know if she's still operating, cause I think she wasn't. Is into it over time, personally, but she was, was three days a week. And it was like six kids and she was making, she said, it was eleven hours a week she worked. And she said she made forty five dollars an hour per hour she worked. She was someone we were considering to hire as a director. And I mean, if you just do the math, like, one person is able to legally. Watch fourteen mixed kids from two to four, and if seven hundred fifty dollars is a rough amount, times fourteen, that's ten thousand dollars a month. Right there. And then times twelve, that's a hundred twenty six thousand dollars. And there really aren't costs besides, I mean. The costs are pretty minor, it's staff. So if it's just you working, you know, it's possible, that would be a pretty hellish life. So just not have support, but I think like, these are all things, like I'm already imagining like, okay, like, once you learn more, like, we can kind of like make this pitch. To like, you know, eighteen year olds, like graduates and whatever, you know, of, you know, Grant County and saying like, here's an option, this is like. You know, there's like, like, the way they have careers, career center things and say.
Form of support for this would obviously be help with self-employment taxes and how to figure out that stuff out. That's part of your business out, because that's intimidating to a lot of people.
Yeah, yeah. And there's like, I mean, like we're using H and R block for our payroll, and like, I think it's like forty dollars a month for something like that per person. You know, it's not a lot, but it's something. But even that was like a lot of like back and forth. There's all, it's just a lot of paperwork to do anything. I mean, I never started a business before. And it's just like, it's crazy how much things fill out. Yeah, yeah. And we're not done yet. We have a lot more to do. So, yeah, I think that's why I think one buck should definitely be administrative support. And, you know, I don't know if, how that'll all. The best way to address that, which needs, right away, the extra support, you know, in terms of a little additional staff. Once in a while, you know, a day a week, a day every two weeks, part of the day, one day a week, something like that. And also cleaning assistance once a week, every two weeks. That to me seems like, to me, we can just kind of like get done pretty quick. And put a program together and. Will, and we'll have, we'll be able to see how it goes pretty quickly.
So, sounds like we have a list of potential program priorities. We have a sketch of a budget, a sketch of how we. So, sounds like we have a list of potential program priorities, we have a sketch of a budget, a sketch of how we make this happen. To me, I think next step would be that before the next meeting, whenever that happens, we have a poll meeting with the childcare providers. Uh, and maybe they're being expanded plus because they invite that next person to make the last one, and say, here's the plan, here's what, here's what we're thinking. And, you know, pending their tacit, not tacit, they're in a general, like, yes, you're on the right track. Then I think probably the next meeting, we could go ahead, you know, kind of approve a disbursement of funds to Moab P A Childcare. Based on a proposal, basically.
So we want to see one more of the, the meetings like you had with the childcare providers. And get some consensus from a, from a group of them that they're gonna use this. Service.
Yeah, it's, it's likely that, you know, just given how quickly things have gone in terms of, you know, with, with this. That in a month from now, we'll have another idea for a program in addition to what, what I mentioned, um, or a tweak or something. And then again, those can still be changed later, but, uh, we just wanted to see, I think, August, I think probably put this in the agenda just to kind of get everybody up to speed. And see if we're kind of on the same page, um, I still think we should probably, if I make sense, since we probably, I mean, maybe it makes sense to still have. You know, some funding to incentivize new, um, childcare.
The next phase of it, it's like, we may be, especially if they're stabilizing, they're feeling like there's plenty of resources, maybe they can start thinking about, well, they need to buy more. Feeling much more, I have more resources, and it's way easier to expand them rather than. Creating a whole new center, whole new spaces, and then they can be training, they might just need, they just need to get friends to do it, but, and, uh, they can't think about it right now.
Yeah, yeah, when, when people are fully busy, right, and they just like can't, they can't do something else, or they don't wanna, they just want, they're gonna drop a ball. Thought. Yeah, no, I mean, I, I still haven't met all the providers, so, um, I, I, I haven't gotten all the feedback from everybody yet. I met, I met with four different providers, um, there, and so I think there's, and there's a few, I'm not sure if they're still there or not, but, um.
Well, it seems like good conversation, kind of has the next steps, there's a couple more things we want to talk about today. Unless there's any kind of input that we've missed, I'd be happy to move on to the next.
I have one last question, uh, for Rob about the childcare providers that you got to know, are they all operating at? Like their full legal capacity as far as number of children?
You know, I, I don't know the answer to that, because we, we didn't have, yeah, it's tough with the questions, with a lot of big group, we weren't able to ask many questions. And I've never met them before, so I kind of didn't wanna come off too strong with like, I wanted to know like, okay, like, exactly. Are you using subsidies and what are you charging? And so, yeah, it was pretty much just like, no, the answer is I don't know, um. I think what, I think, uh, in aggregate, um, actually, I have an answer for you in aggregate. Which Lisa gave me, which was that there are ninety nine spots that are subsidy eligible in Moab, so that doesn't include. Um, the Montessori, for instance, so there, when I calculate the spots, I got one forty seven, and she's like, no, it's ninety nine, but I think the answer told us probably somewhere in between. She said of the ninety nine spots, there are less than a dozen openings, so the dozen openings, I would bet. Aren't, are sort of like, that's that kind of capacity you mentioned, I think the ninety nine spots that she mentioned are the legal amount of spots. And when people have less, it's because maybe they, they don't want to have an extra two kids, also too, like. Yeah, I, I have to look into that, there probably is some opportunity to get an extra one or two. Especially with staff, cause again, the hurdle is just the space, that's the biggest hurdle, and, um. Yeah, I mean, like, we, at our center, for instance, at the, in the Lutheran Church, it's a pretty good sized space, you know, we'll be able to have fourteen. You know, maybe fifteen or sixteen if you wanted to push it. But, you know, we can't do much more than that, it's a lot of, yeah, so you have to devote a lot of space to it. So the opportu, the opportunity for me here, like, is, there's not like an easy low hanging fruit that, oh, we can just get everybody to double their existing capacity, that's not. On the table, I think, there might be one or two examples of that.
Yeah, I guess, I guess in terms of just like a, a picture of what the supply looks like for the average consumer of childcare is, uh.
The three providers?
Uh, not that, he was somebody else, but they were saying basically, like, within like, the first month that. They found out they were having. Yeah, they went out to childcare providers to, to get a spot. For like three years into the future for when the child would need childcare, and they got the last available spot. So not even like after they were born, like after they hit conceive, so the, the, the lead time and the, the insane constraint on supply.
He said he got the last spot.
Three years from.
Yeah, it was something like that, yeah.
It already gets booked up, so like.
No, there's a hundred kids born every, and the H M K, there's a hundred kids every grade, and, you know, so. It's a weird situation, and, um, yeah, I think, it's funny, it's not really being, it's not talked about as much as other issues in Moab, right? But I think, you know, it seems like, once you start getting people going on it, it's an issue. I, I mean, I'm still not sure, like, what are people even doing, it's like, for instance, those, those, those theoretical spots that aren't there right now. Like, I don't exactly know what the typical archetypes of those people are like, like.
Like non-subsidized spots, they're saying.
What I mean is that, imagine a family that needs childcare, that, that, that needs childcare, that isn't currently getting it, what are they doing? What do they do? I'm thinking of, if you go to Flooring America, you'll see a woman with her kids there, you know, like.
And some of them just can't work, and if they're a single parent who, who can't work, you're in real big trouble.
Right, yeah, cause I don't know how that all, yeah, like, it's. We're, we're, we're such a ways away from, it sounds like, filling the need, uh, so, I don't think. What I mean is I like, yeah, it's like, like, these numbers are good for a presentation or, or something like that, the, the hundred versus the four fifty, but. Whether the numbers really three fifty, it doesn't really matter, um, that they're such a. Anyways, thank you all for your support, this is really, uh, cool that I feel like, you know, Moab P A Childcare is like. We've expanded into this, like, now we're part of this board, cause, uh, I feel like, you know, there's a lot of people that are working on housing. You know, and housing is a really tough issue that, like you mentioned, you know. Yeah, I mean, look what's happening now with the zoning, and I think this, this could be a cool thing to push forward, um, that might, might be, might be, might be easier.
That was gonna be my last thought, my transition thought was, you know, housing is gonna be at the quick little top of the conversation here next. Um, and, you know, that's something that feels at times it's around, insurmountable, right, and, and ever getting worse. And I think that for, on the childcare side of things, it's almost like a underappreciated need, and perhaps we could make headway. Quite quickly on, uh, relatively speaking.
Yeah, relatively, that's because like the law of the weight percentages work, right, is if you have a very low base, and things get a little better, like, or, you know, it actually makes a huge difference. Yeah, whereas housing, it's like, it's, I mean, a royal crossing even, it's like, yeah, it's three hundred houses in seven years of a housing stock of five thousand. Or something like, it's a big deal, but like, that's seven years and that's.
Right, so, speaking of housing, we don't have a huge budget on this particular board or this body, but, you know, we, we put about eighty grand. Again, kind of similar amount to housing of essential workers, housing, something, something. And, uh, you know, we kind of tabled it, so we'll come back to it, and I think that, uh, something where I mentioned last time. You know, one of these things that has come up as a potential solution, uh. Or one of the tools, the tool belt, I could say, is kind of, you know, literally buying deed restrictions, going and trying to. On the open, um, existing housing stock, not building anything new, but putting basically legal work, work, uh, live restrictions on homes. Uh, either voluntarily, uh, or for people who are like, I want to do this, and if you pay, like, I, I bid low. And I get this, uh, my house, you know, in a perfect world, that, that program like this is, you're actually helping. To provide down payments for new homeowners and you're buying deed restrictions, which is what Vale did. And, you know, in that context, they're spending about sixty grand a pop, uh, which actually is contributing to a down payment, yeah. Then that house is now forever in a work with, kind of secondary market that's different from the open market, and so. Eighty thousand isn't gonna get us there, but I think we're, could get us, what Rob pointed out, is this, uh, kind of going to the lowest bidder. And paying out as many as we can for eighty thousand, so if, you know, if you get forty people. You get, uh, twenty people. Anyway, whatever, you get a certain number of people and they pay, you know, five grand, we pay them five grand each, basically. Then that would, that would be a certain number of restrictions that aren't currently on the market, uh, yeah.
Low, that's a pretty low paying deed restriction.
Can I add a little bit to that?
Yeah.
So, yeah, yes, Jasmine, um, yeah, so, cer- certainly for a work-live deed restriction, that is way too low. Bail's number is sixty thousand dollars, house prices are much higher there, so ours are gonna be lower, also, um. Yeah, so, what I was, I mean, I think we could do different kinds of restrictions, one deed restriction that would, would go for less would just be. Permanent residence requirement. That'd be something that like, I think is, really doesn't affect the value, wouldn't really affect the value of resale of a house. That much, I mean, arguably wouldn't at all, cause you could be a remote worker and still buy a house, I think that's, while not ideal for work-live. It would be something that might be a lot more attainable, um, and ultimately, they're still part of the community, it's not a, it's not a dark home. Work-live would definitely be more, the other thought, though, Jasmine, in terms of the cost for these things, was the idea of. I don't, I went to that Vale indeed presentation, it seemed like they were like, this is what we're paying, we pay sixty grand, like, each year, like, we just see who wants it, and we just pay a little bit more each year. Um, as opposed to, like, the ideal person for us to buy the restriction from would be someone who's like, say, old and retired, and. You know, they have, uh, you know, there's like, they don't really plan on passing the house off to anyone, or. They're, or they don't plan on moving, or, or selling the house, if they're just like aging in place, and they say, cool, like, extra ten grand, I, I don't do anything. Or whatever, I was. Yeah, so I think, at, at first, since we haven't done this, we could get those like low hanging fruit situations. As opposed to convincing someone who's like way younger, who's clearly gonna sell this house at some point, and they're worried about how this might affect their future value. So it'd be like an experiment to see if people would bite, um, and you kind of do a thing where you say, are you interested in doing this? And then if so, name your price, and you say, we have this amount of money, if we have a certain amount of money to buy these things up, and we're gonna start the lowest, lowest price. And if you say, I'll sell for fifty grand, then you're not gonna get it, but if you say a thousand, and you're the lowest, then you're getting that, you're getting a thousand bucks.
I really like the idea of that, the deed restrictions for keeping housing, um, keeping your housing stock in long-term housing. What about, I mean, I wonder what it would take to incentivize second homeowners or overnight rental owners. To long-term lease.
That's a really good question.
Yeah. I got so much to say on all these issues, but someone else, Carly, Carly, go ahead, you know more than me.
I can't, I can't believe people don't, it's, it's crazy, I mean, I'm kind of surrounded by second homeowners, you know, it comes to mobbing. For two weeks out of the year, it's like, you have a whole house here, you can make a lot of money, just one person in there, it's gonna air me and me when you get into town, but I don't. I don't know what there is, if you just have completely different incentives than I think we're, we're used to. I mean, I'm just sort of talking a lot about this active employee household requirement in the past couple of weeks and. Well, it's so curious, I'm just curious to see what something like that would do to the market, like a deed restriction, seeing our fee restriction program was really successful. I don't know, is, is the better, if we're gonna go in that direction anyway with the zoning option. Is this kind of deed restriction thing that we want, or do we want one that's, it's more about like permanent or, I don't know. No matter what it could look like. Like one with like an offer, like a right of first refusal for a local one that was required. It's open for like four months instead of two weeks or whatever. But, I, you're right, Rob, it would be those kinds of people, it's someone with a ton of equity in the house, they're never gonna move, they're not really worried about it. Um, and I just don't know how to help, how to access those people.
Well, you're almost like you're buying a deed restriction in like twenty years, really.
So the other, the other thing I should mention on this is, I don't know if, I, you know, I'm, uh, I was on the Board of the Land Trust for two years, and I talked with, you know, Caitlin Myers. The executive director around something like this, and she's very interested in doing something similar, um, and trying to design a program. Got her hands full now, other things, um, but I definitely think that it'd be something that. This is kind of, might sound a little cheesy, but I think it makes sense, and, uh, I think, um, so let's say, I, I, I think it could be, um. If, if, if someone were to have a deed restriction on their house, I think, uh, we could have a, a thing where there'd be like a small, like, concrete, kind of like plaque. That like is pretty unobtrusive, but just big enough to notice, and it says something like reserved for locals on it. And then it has like a link or something like that, and then people will be like, what the hell's that, or. A QR code, and then they'll understand the program, and then I think hopefully it could be a kind of thing where it's like. You know, all the city council people, all the county commission people, you know, I'm about to, not to throw you out, to call you out, Kevin, but. You say you're for these issues, you don't have the plaque, people will be like, why don't you have the plaque, man? And if the plaque says live and work, that might be like asking too much, because that's a big restriction, like, I don't, I don't, I would be comfortable doing that, like. But I definitely do want to know, know trouble, that's just a permanent residence or long-term rental requirement. And, um, it could be maybe a thing where, you know, like those flyers that go up around helpless houses, like, you know, like quiet streets or whatever, that becomes a thing.
This house is, house is a lot.
Yeah, put your money where your mouth is, or like, or, or not just, yeah, just reserved, no, it's deed restricted, no, this is, it's a, it's a social currency thing, because. Ultimately, all the issues, Carly, like we mentioned, to second homeowners or whoever, the reason we don't have ADUs in this, in this town. Is because the people who can make them don't need the money, you know, the people that want the extra money don't have a hundred thousand dollars to put in their backyard to build an ADU to rent it out. Slowly, so we have to offer something else besides necessarily just money, and I think one thing to do that would be essentially like, you know, a little social currency slash social shaming. You know, where you say, like, you know, do you stand for this or do you not, and make it easy for them to do it, so that was kind of what I've been talking with Caitlin about. Just my little idea to throw out there, this, add to this discussion.
I do like the deed restriction option too, cause I, at the city, at least, when we're exploring this option, we're having a lot of trouble knowing what to do about single-family homes, it doesn't work. But we kind of come up with that percentage base, doesn't work when it comes to big subdivisions, it works for the multifamily units, if it's not homes, the condos. And so this fills that gap where it would be probably a home and, um, maybe if we do pursue it, like. Exempting things like apartment, of course, cause people have own apartments, but also maybe those, those dwellings that might be more conducive to a different kind of tool. To make them an active employee housing, but, I feel like the, like the duplexes and single-family houses would be an option.
And then I imagine there's nothing we can do with like tax abatement type stuff, there's no incentives, like pay property taxes or, you won't have a city property tax.
We don't have one, so, I mean.
Well, the county can do, or may, maybe there's, yeah, I mean, ideally, like, I mean, I think you guys are exploring this now with this, with the thing you're doing with the, the work. Is like, if you want to change one thing, you gotta kind of like offset it to make the overall impact nebulous, so it's not like a taking, you know? So it's like, if you could make this where it's like, okay, you're getting this plaque, you're getting ten thousand dollars, you're getting like. You're gonna, your property tax goes down by whatever, you know, I don't know, there could be, whatever, I don't, I'm guessing you can, cause it's Utah.
They could do a reimbursement, I mean, if it gets taxed, it, maybe there's like an application where you, you can give the money back. Just cause you taxed it with me, it could affect somebody through some sort of programming.
Oh, wow, yeah, cause maybe, cause maybe the payment could be more of like, instead of paying like, you know, twenty thousand dollars, whatever it's gonna cost to buy these things. They could say, you know, that money will be, um, you know, paid back over, over ten years or something like that. That can make it more financial, cause this is gonna add up really quick, Vale can do this because, when I was looking at it, like Vale's budget is like eighty million dollars a year. And they have the same amount of residents as us, and probably less tourists, you know, per year that go there, um, than Darche's.
So I know, this has been talked about on the Housing Task Force for some time, the deed restriction idea, and I think the administration. Of the deed restrictions was also something, you know, that's been talked about, and I think, um, I think the how, the housing. Authority, it seemed like, was working on that, and maybe. Funding the administration of deed restrictions is something that the city and county both, you know. You know, we're looking at doing, so maybe some of this money could go towards that pot of, of paying for the administration of deed restrictions.
Yeah, I heard that, like my friend was in, was selling his house and. He talked with Rachel Moody and. And he asked about getting a deed restriction on it. She was like, we do it all the time. We had, we had these things and they just basically steal paperwork from the house. And throw it on there and she was like. You know, in her mind, it was worth thirty thousand dollars off the house to add like a permanent residence component, which that was just her idea. But. I don't, I think, I mean, I just, you know, I mean, I, I see remote workers coming, yeah, remote workers will be able to pay. The same prices, I think, as second homeowners ultimately, and they're a better person, better, better person to have in your community. But they're obviously not as important as, they're not, they're, they're completely less, less useful than someone who. You know, like this town can't be full of me and remote workers, you know, people like me. No one's gonna do any, work a few hours a week, yeah. So that's gonna be more expensive, but that's really cool. We should maybe look into that, like. The, the tax, tax thing, because that's whatever, two thousand dollars a year or something like that.
It's just a, like incentive program, just like a five, a term five back of fifteen for with property tax.
That wouldn't affect like bonds or anything like that, that are based on.
Well, you couldn't do it with like dedicated property taxes that they're going to advance, but it would just the general fund property tax. But I mean, it's just a lot of, it's just a lot of money. That's why you haven't done it.
And, and the fact that I think our property taxes are most flexible dollars.
Yeah.
The money that we have here, whether it's from the state or from TRT is dedicated to certain things.
Yeah, the other thought.
I mean, the thing that Carly brought up, that, you know, we're not, we're not allowed to lower people's taxes, but we maybe are allowed to. To give a rebate or something like that. I mean, that's a pretty serious loophole in the, this idea that we have to charge everybody the same property tax. I mean, you know, we could go crazy with that and. You know, basically do- double our rate, but give half our citizens, you know, complete rebate, you know.
Yeah.
So I'm just one, I'm just wondering how much you've looked into that legally.
Well, it's like any program where you're paying for something that you want, right? So it's not like a, just a pass through where it's like, oh, here. Thanks for your property taxes, here's the rebate. It is pay your property taxes, if you have a deed restriction, we're gonna use, we're gonna put the property taxes into a general fund, just cut you a check. Or it's like we're buying that deed restriction.
Oh, it's like you're funding a program.
Yeah.
Programs fun, like. Goes back.
It goes back.
Looks like you win the lottery, you get a lump sum or a payment. So you could say, we're buying a need restriction and then our cost is gonna be. This.
Right.
Payment stream. I was gonna change this, I was gonna sort of invert the, the theory, this conversation and just say. If we want the outcome we want, we all kind of know the outcome we want, you know? The other way to go about, and this, this is certainly not an easy way to go about helping it. It's slow, houses are super expensive. So buying a fraction of a lot of houses is like, right, will be hard. The other thing would be trying to, I don't have a simple answer, it'd be trying to think, okay, well, you know, going after this sort of like the dark home, second homes. And saying, would we put that more as like the focus opposed to buying the restrictors? What if we put, we put money towards disincentivizing something else?
Yeah.
You know, like, I mean, I, I mean personally, as a private resident, I've certainly thought about like writing a nice letter, you know, and. Explaining why second homes hurt our community and slipping under the doors of people in my neighborhood, just saying, hey, it'd be awesome if you lived here full time. Be great to have you as a neighbor, but you're not a neighbor, so like, you know, you probably don't realize this, I think.
You think we pay for a mailer campaign?
Why, well, no, I just mean like, we're not doing, as a community right now, we're fighting noise of UTVs pretty aggressively in a grassroots way. And we're not doing that at all with second homes. Like, why don't we have T-shirts? Why don't we have bumper stickers or signs? I think second homeowners, many of them, just like UTV drivers, don't realize how disturbing they are to our community. So I'm just saying, it might, maybe we should consider the inversion of what we just said, which is like, maybe it's way cheaper to, yeah, to think about. Lobbying for changes, like there was a, who was the guy in, was it Crested Butte or something? Who tried to have a tax for second homeowners that got like. Almost happened and it got shut down, like a dark home tax. So that'd be the other.
I mean, they already are taxed so much more. There is a disincentive and they still do it and it's, it's interesting on their property taxes.
Yeah, which is tough because the people that have them don't care because they have the extra two thousand dollars. There is, yes, they do pay the hundred percent versus forty. Yeah, I mean, because ultimately what we want with these deed restrictions is we want to have community people that live here. So I think. This is just me speaking, you know, what we've done with UTV noise, I think in some ways it's been effective because it's made certain people realize that. They're being obnoxious and annoying other people when they're driving in town. And, and I think some people on the fence are now like, it's not cool to ride in one. And so I think something like that could still, could be done with second homes that would cost essentially nothing. Maybe if it was more coordinated.
You know, is it, but is it clear that, I mean, I certainly agree the second homes are a problem if they're crowding out, you know, building workforce housing. And, and so I think certainly in the short term, we should be trying to disincentivize second homes, but. You know, there, there've been second homes in Moab for, you know, for thirty years and it's never, people haven't complained about them until we've hit this housing crunch, so. I'm, I'm, I guess I'm, I'm just not completely convinced that second, you know, in the absence of high housing prices. Are second homes such a blight on the community?
Yeah, I mean, I, so there's a few things that you could go after and I won't touch on some of the more nebulous ones. I guess I would just say like. That, you know, there's very little supply of homes for sale right now, right? There are a number that are owned by second homeowners. I think, you know. If we could convince some of them to sell their homes, that would be beneficial.
Just to lease them, just even to rent them out on a long-term basis, you know, I probably. Waiting list for housing all of the time.
Yeah, the trouble is they probably don't need the monthly rent and wanna deal with that. So, I mean, I don't, I don't know, I mean, like I think in many societies, like. I mean, a lot of our laws are shame-based, you know, or different things. So I think like, there should be an element of like, we should, you know, be letting people know. Hey, like, this isn't, this is, you know, I think it would be amazing tomorrow if everybody who has a second home in town put it on Zillow. And those prices would come down slightly because that'd be a lot of supply, but those people, and if those people on average, yeah, were. People that are doing essential work in this community or even just living in this community and going to events and participating like I'm participating right now would be better.
Pay sales taxes and.
Yeah, yeah, the second homeowners do like try to say how great they are and they're, and I get that, it's, it's very American concept, the second home thing. One of my slogans was, homes should be like Thanksgiving. No one gets seconds until everybody gets firsts.
I like it. Yeah, go ahead, Ken.
Another adjacent idea that, that's been, you know, discussed on and off over the last few years is. You know, we have a, a ton of short-term rental condos in the community and. You know, it'd be great if some of those could be converted into, you know, in, in some kind of resonant housing. Something else we have right now is that there's, there's not a lot of, you know, if someone wants to build new overnight accommodations. There's not a very easy pathway forward in, I think, either the county or the city. And so one can imagine sometime in the future where if you, you know, you're really excited to build a hotel in Moab. Well, you know, maybe the condition is you have to buy, you know, take in a, some equivalent amount of rental condos and convert them into. You know, principal residences and we, like Rem Village, for example, I think it's twenty-five percent. You know, of the units there are occupied as homes, so there, there are condo complexes that are mixed that way, so.
But I, I think, I, I love how this conversation is going and I just wanna maybe bring it down to what can we do with eighty thousand dollars this year? And, and I think that. To me, I see one of two routes. One is this kind of like lowest bidder, easiest bar, you know, primary residence. Deed restriction, lowest bidder gets a kind of, kind of deal and we, we spend the money and we see how many we get and it's basically an experiment. And then the other one is the same type of system, but for, you know, short-term rental to long, long-term rental. Basically, if you're bringing on any unit that wasn't long-term rental, that is now not long-term rental, so whether that is a second homeowner. Or there is a.
I don't.
Short-term rental, go ahead.
But just academically, wouldn't that have to be much more expensive per unit? Because in, in the first example, we're not negatively impacting someone's cash flow, you know?
Right.
What it would actually take to do the second one, because it's gonna take a lot.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, what's nice about those people is that they are, they do care about money, unlike the second homeowners who might as a group, maybe don't care about it. Because they just have a bunch of it. So they might not be incentivized by the financial incentive. Short-term rentals certainly would be. But to convert that to a long-term, there'd have to be a carrot that would be equal. So it'd have to be something like, you can build an extra story now. Or something like that, so they can show how, here's how our cash flow goes up. But absent that, a deed restriction is nice because it is actually improves their cash flow, because they're saying, you don't come out of your home. Just everything, you know, and maybe in thirty years, your home is worth slightly less, but it'll be up anyways then and. You know, whatever, I'm old, I wanna live here, rest of my life anyways. So I think a lot of people will be, will be pretty stoked to, to bid lower to say. I want that cash right now. So I, I, I agree with you, I just don't know how to, how to do it and maybe we could talk to some, unless you could, could add in some other things, maybe like. Higher, allowing higher density, but it seems like, the code seems like, seems like it's set in stone by some point, someone a long time ago. You can't change.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out how we, we figure that out, but I'm also wondering if. There aren't people out there who are really struggling to find someone to manage or clean or whatever, those condos. That might be ripe for this type of thing. Maybe they're just sick and tired of cleaning up after somebody or whatever it is. And I, I mean, it sounds opportunistic maybe and I, but, but the other real pressure in the community is workforce and so. Maybe there's the right combination of, of those factors that would, would incentivize someone. To take a little bit less maybe to convert and get out of the business or, or, you know. Be able to retire or whatever. I don't know how you go about identifying that necessarily, but I wonder if that's a factor that could be used. Because I really like the idea of converting rentals as much as possible. I recognize that it's gonna be expensive, but. It feels like a little more. Immediate impact. And, and maybe more the target group that we're trying to house.
Because you need to open housing for people.
Right now.
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 I agree with what Rob said, that I think it's quite a bit, it'd be quite a bit more expensive to give in someone to convert a short-term rental into. Into a long-term rental, whereas I, I think, you know, the, the first idea, you know, half an hour ago, seems the most promising to me, which is. Just try to get deed restrictions from people who currently own their homes, so we're basically preventing second homes, you know, five or ten years from now.
Yeah, they're both great ideas.
The other thing I just wanna quickly mention is just like long-term strategy. There's basically two pots of money that we have, that, you know, we're working with. This is rural county grant money. State, you know, community-led economic development, right? They're basically saying, the premise of that is that keyies know best. We're gonna let you kind of apply, like have a pot and play with it and see what happens. And then this economic diversification spend. Is, you know, a five-year sunset for Grant County pretty much only. That have an additional million dollars a year to spend on economic diversification, which is governed simply, you know, activities that are similar to. We're building off of state economic development programs. So basically to me, anything that we do with rural county grant money that the state approves. We can expand and spend diversification TRT money on. So, you know, obviously, it's, at the end of the day, you know, commission priorities. Will, will how we spend that money. But I, I kind of see the rural county grant pot as an experiment. As an opportunity to experiment with other people's money to make kind of. Proving grounds for stuff that we can spend more on and really invest in from the diversification grant money in the future. So, you know, if housing is this really big priority and, you know, us as a county, besides planning its zoning efforts, which are really important. Are trying to figure out how, what's our game plan here? And obviously, there's probably conversations that I'm not a part of that I don't know about, Kevin, can tell me in here, but. You know, whether it's deed restrictions or, or bringing sex short-term rentals onto long-term rental markets. You know, I think whatever we do here is an opportunity to basically prove a concept that we can then spend money from the diversification money on. With a bigger kind of baseball bat, basically.
Well, I like that. And if that's the case, I'd like to throw out another program that I think we talked about briefly. Which I'll not be short with this because I've talked a lot today. I apologize, but. Is to incentivize ADU development. So the trouble with, there's a few troubles with ADUs, I'm no expert on them and I'm sure some of you know more than me, so. But basically, the people that would actually be into the idea of having ADU on their property. Oftentimes are, you know, less financially well-off and don't have, and with an ADU. You know, you might have to essentially just buy that outright. It might be hard for you to like take a loan out on your house and then put that money to work. Especially now with rates going up, so. To buying a prefab house that's a hundred thousand dollars and then you can't sell that, you can't subdivide a lot. You can, you've rented out, so you make your money back slowly. So, you know, perhaps we could think about. There could be a few different things. I mean, one is like more of a policy thing, which I'm still trying to get an answer from, just more of like a Christina Sloan question is. Is whether you can theoretically sell your backyard, sell a long-term lease on your backyard to someone else, the way the land trust does it. Where they do a ninety-nine year lease. So you could say, for fifty thousand dollars, I get a ninety-nine year lease on your backyard with, that's extendable. And, and then, and that, then that person can be super stoked to spend fifty grand and then to buy the hundred thousand dollar, you know, prefab house. And put it on there that we could have housing. Or if that's not, not a doable strategy or might take too long or whatever. You know, like, you know, I, I mean, I depend on exactly what qualifies, what the lowest thing is, whether or not. But I would imagine, you know, maybe it could be instead of. Deed restriction to something that, like planting seeds, where we'll look back on it thirty years and be like, that was great, we did it. But it's not gonna have an impact to anything near term, in terms of housing, really. But maybe we could take eight thousand dollars and give twenty thousand dollars of it to people that are gonna put an ADU on their house. And now that makes the math work a lot better for them. And we have, and then we have four new spots or something like that.
Right.
Or, or just do financing, right? Having like a revolving loan because, you know, like, oh, you put an ADU up there and then, you know, so we'll give you all the money for it. You'll get, you'll get, you know, fifty hundred dollars a month in rent and, you know, you pay us five hundred a month or something like that. Or you, I don't, I don't, I don't know, I haven't looked at all the specifics, but I think eighty, to me, it seems like eighty use is like a big opportunity in the code. That it's like, you know, that's sort of already there to add density. It's the only thing that's right, right? And the number we have is like laughably low in town. It's like thirty-seven or something like that, of like five thousand units.
It's under you.
And, and something that we as a body prioritized, we said, let's do it. And then, and then. And then as we went through the river roll, what the county kind of thought was best practices is like, I think we're gonna do a better shot of getting this big pot of money for approved project. Well, here we are kind of talking about beta testing stuff. And I think that.
I like the reverse step that Josh, I would be so curious to see what would happen with that.
For the deed restrictions.
For the deed restrictions.
Yeah. Because I think if you also tell them too, you say, we have eighty thousand dollars, just be really transparent of it.
Yeah.
We're gonna give this money to someone.
Yeah.
And so.
Best stop, best offers.
Yep.
So here's, here's, here's what my thought is on this. I'm gonna just pull up kind of the, where we are at in terms of allocating the part eight budget this year. I'll share my screens. Okay, can everybody see this? Should I make it zoom in maybe? So. You know, basically, this was this big kind of shattered, scatter shot shotgun, what we proposed around this time last year, right? We had all of these programs. We started to consolidate a little bit. And we just, where that eighty is coming from at the moment. Other things that are floating out there, this America Vista is gonna happen. The Canyon Lines Business Summit, we spent closer to how much total? It was like twenty-one or twenty-two, I gotta look back. So maybe there's like another, a little under ten grand left there. And then this entrepreneurship program, matching funds ended up kind of falling through. In terms of how we were planning to spend it. So to me, you know, okay, that's like maybe forty grand more and then we put in this. Diversity Equity and Inclusion Program with the intention of putting that into the master plan process or maybe putting it into grant funds. But, but at the moment, that doesn't, you know, like if we have to spend this this year, that's not actionable. We don't really have a plan or a clear goal of what that looks like. And, and, but childcare and housing seems fairly obvious. And and but childcare and housing seems fairly obvious. So to to me, I would think, let's take this additional seventy five grand. Well, no, excuse me. Fifty five grand. And, you know, maybe. Well, this is gonna be, we spent twenty grand. Is that right? Yes. Is that that with the sponsorships and sales and all that? Yes. Yeah, okay. So, yeah, it's more like fifty grandish. And we can bulk up one of the two of these. We figure out how much we want to spend on the daycare thing. And maybe we split up the workforce housing support line item into two or three that are like forty grand each or something. And just see what happens with them. That would be kind of my, if I had to, if I had to make this right now for for this funding for Part A for this year, that's kind of what I would try to do. Any any kind of initial thoughts on that?
I mean, it's, I liked what how you described, you know, we'd we'd find out what will happen. And I think I think I think it's a good idea because then we will get at least some information for the future to figure out what direction is feasible.
Rob, for context, I was just saying, you know, we have these kind of unallocated line items for rural county for our data this year. This thirty grand from the entrepreneurship program kind of fell through how we were intending to spend it. We have ten grand extra, basically, you know, it's business summit. And then I think, you know, enacting a DEI program at the moment, if we have to spend it this summer, we're not like really positioned to have a clear strategy of what that looks like. We're trying to add some DEI components to some of the other programs we're doing. So to me, that gives us about fifty grand more budget. And if kept daycare and eighty grand total spend, you know, that gives us, you know, forty grand each approximately. Or maybe three different. You know, or maybe just two kind of housing programs. We did a reverse Dutch auction, you know, long term. Deed restriction program, then we did the ADU.
Just a short term.
Yes, you get a short term, long term, and then you each dedicate like sixty, fifty grand to it. And you kind of just see what happens.
So August. At the end of the day, the the commission is gonna decide really if they accept our proposals on this, right?
Well, if if there's a like a purchasing process. So, you know, it really comes down to like the final grantee. So like if if someone who got an ADU was receiving anything more than five grand, then yeah, like that contract would have to be viewed by the commission.
But my question was like, as far as us being the advisory board, like we're coming up with these ideas of how to spend this. And then does the commission give the final okay on what we've come up with?
Not necessarily. I mean, I mean, the way the way that this program works is that this body advises our application to the state. That application gets reviewed and approved by the commission. It goes to the state. They say, yes, here's your money. But then we can amend kind of the plan. And this body kind of advises our department on how to spend the money.
Oh, got it. Okay. So it's gonna go back to the commission and they're gonna be like, well, since we didn't get the full six hundred thousand out of Part B, we might as well spend what you've allotted to workforce housing to the Arroyo Crossing because that was what they wanted it spent for.
However, I would say that probably wise, a wise decision would be saying, you know, bring to do, bring this to the commission. So here's kind of what we're thinking in a workshop or, you know, in some in some form of communication so so that, you know, isn't blindsided by this change. And then when the actual grant contracts, whatever comes out of this, then they know that they're expecting this to happen at some point. Kevin, I don't know if you want to speak to that in terms of like commission desires and hopes for transparency and.
I I think if you're making a change in how you're proposing to spend the grant money, it'd be good to run it by the commission.
Yeah. So I think that I think that's probably.
Are you going to put a requirement to the length of the restriction or is that part of whatever someone's going to offer?
Well, I thought it was.
Do it for a period of time, right? The next ten to fifteen years. And I don't know if they're like, I'll do it fifteen years or five grand or, you know, whatever. If it's you want fifty or you want a perpetual or.
We gotta do a perpetual. That will transfer over with sales.
Especially for, I mean, if it's the kind of folks that you have in mind, Rob, who would be interested in it. Because we're playing a long game with them, right? They're going to be selling it in ten to fifteen years.
You're you're right, though, that 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 like a time restriction would would make our initial cost a lot less. So it's like, you know, oh, you want to sell it in five years. Like they're they're taking a gamble. Like, I'm not gonna sell it, but that's.
What's the spot price for a one year?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It it doesn't seem like it's would be in our interest.
I was just wondering. I don't I don't. I think perpetual makes the most sense for a hundred years, whatever it is.
There could be, there could be a live work and versus the permanent residence. I mean, live work is obviously. Well, also, too, the other thing I didn't mention is that, like, just like with the childcare, where we're starting with a low base, starting this program from scratch. There are so many people in this town who are, would be so into this, right? That would jump at the chance. Caitlin was telling me she had some friends who were just wanted her help with a deed restriction for no money, right? You know, and so I think the live work thing right now, I mean, yeah, like, again, a lot of people, if they're unless they really a lot of people live in a home that has value, they don't need that value. They just want to live in that home. So I think starting this out there with that with that Dutch auction versus Dutch auction, we would get some people, you know, long term members of this community that care a lot about it, that are financially secure, that would just say, yeah, I want to be part of that. Especially if we give them that little plaque that I caught them kind of with.
We brand it.
Well, again, I'm I'm gonna recommend that we kind of circle back and put together kind of a proposal on this based on this conversation, which feels pretty, I I feel like I have a pretty clear understanding of what would be next, which is like, I think I zero out those programs that were kind of, you know, have extra money for this for the childcare and workforce housing. Create a kind of an allocation of fund that makes sense in a general sketch of a childcare focused program that would basically be a lump sum dispersment spot community childcare with a bunch of stipulations of here's kind of the general goal, you know, childcare is going to figure out exactly how to influence it with oversight from the body. The second being, we're gonna give this first action for perpetual deed restriction or primary housing. So not a work lift, but just a.
I think we should, I I think we should include the work lift too, because I think there are some people that will make essentially a bad deal for them because they want to.
Yeah.
They want it. They want to show how much they care and they'll say.
It could be.
Because it doesn't hurt them. It doesn't hurt. It hurts their heirs most likely, right?
Right. Yeah, which is great. So a lot of that.
But I'm sure we could get ten people to do that in this town. And it'll be hard to keep getting them, but at least we got.
No, it's one being an ADU program and really targeting people who are probably like just on the fence of maybe could have could afford it, but they just, maybe they can't finance it. They just can't make it square. So I like this. It feels like low hanging fruit. It's experimenting in the best way. And it's an opportunity to, if this work, to really amplify it in the future.
Do you want to be, I'm sorry, I'm just thinking about what permanent deed restriction, permanent is weird. Because it means that that property forever can only be that use really forever. Does that make sense? So it's sort of, you put like, it's gonna be residential and then only that, you know, it's only live work. So I'm wondering, so say like the zoning changes and there's more density available, but now it's like this stuck.
I have no idea.
Yeah.
It's like a rest control, like.
Yeah, and it's it's like, do you really want that? If it's a single family home, do you really want that single family home to be that way forever? And like, you know, there's talk about like deed restriction.
I was imagining a thing that just goes on the lease that like that goes on the deed, that if they sell it, it just transfers over.
Right. And they sell it, but then, but if they sell it to like a developer or whatever, so you just might want to think about making sure it's in appropriate zones and stuff, you know, like.
Well, and I and I think that. Yeah, I think the outcome would be work with whoever is.
Like Hostel's already doing this type of thing.
They definitely are, but but like in the land trust is doing it, but they're gonna own that forever. So, right, that makes sense for them because they know what the land use is going to look like. But if you start thinking it's gonna be a single family home forever or not necessarily, it doesn't have to be, but it's gonna forever or whatever.
Are you precluding?
The county's HDHO program faces the the same issue.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know if you want to be specific about where you want to buy the deed restrictions, you know, if it's like places like the high density areas or something like that. I don't, again, I don't mean to make it complicated. But it's just something that will be forever.
Because if you do it forever and in a place where you could potentially have a higher density and 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 actually end up with more workforce housing than you would have with that single family home, it doesn't make sense to to keep that. It kind of.
You do it like the the land trust where it's like on the land but not on the building. So like every like, because maybe it's not density restricted. This particular parcel, just whatever, whatever units are on there. Or you could just say, yeah, well, you could even just say like, you could just say this house, right? You could do the building. I don't I don't, I'm not an expert. You have to talk, you have to talk to a lawyer to figure out how to do it. But it could be like this house, if this house doesn't exist anymore, then this this deed does not exist anymore. Someone could, then they could tear it down.
To be to be determined.
Yeah, I think I think at this stage, right, we're just kind of ironing these parties out. I think it makes sense to include ADUs. We all talked about that before for the Part B, we dropped it.
Yeah, cool. Well, we got fifteen minutes. Ben, do you want to do a quick update on the grant stuff? High level.
Sure. High level is August and I did two public workshops at the end of March on the two grants that we are reviewing with the commission next week. One of them being the Small Tours and Business Marketing Grant, the other being the Economic Diversification Grant. At our last meeting in March, this body gave us some really good input on both. It was unfortunately my intention to get the document to everyone before this meeting, but we've just been working on last minute changes. It's got to go to the commission soon. It hasn't gone through that much change since we talked about it last month. But I would be happy to send it to folks if they wanted to take a look at it. Well, we're sending it to the commission next week. Kevin's definitely gonna get to read it. But the gist of it is, you know, for the diversification grant, we've got a hundred thousand dollars set aside for programs that we think can either lower the cost of living or increase benefits, productivity, wages in organizations that are diversified in county. And then the fifty five thousand that we have set aside for these small tours of business marketing grant is for those smaller tourism businesses, be they retail outfitters, restaurants, to kind of get a leg out within the business ecosystem in the county. So we've been working on those for a while. We appreciate the input. If anyone has any last questions or comments about that before we send it to commission for like an initial approval, I'm glad to pull up the document or go over it, whatever people would like.
I mean, if if you're, if you can send it to us, I would kind of like to read it. Yeah, I'm curious to see like what kind of applications you got. And I'm just curious, you know, as as just as a member of the community to see what's out there. I'm so excited about the programs and like is, you know, unprecedented in terms of the size. I can't imagine that there's anything like this sizable for just this little place. This is like a state level funding almost for, I think. I mean, I mean, look at the, look at the Part B funding, right? The biggest thing they did was three hundred thousand dollars. The whole state.
Did I miss anything?
No. I will send both of those right away. I think the biggest kind of question marks for the commission to take a look at is for the Tours of Business Marketing Grant. I think there is a concern that making it written in such a way that that the outcome isn't that. You know, we're increasing marketing for like a UTV rental business necessarily that's causing, that's contributing the noise issue. And then on on the, but trying to make it in such a way that if a business like that had found like a smart and clever way to use this to, you know, make them more kind of fitting of what the community would like to see, then we would want, we would not want to exclude that outright. So anyway, working on that for the tourist market and then for the diversification grant, trying to solve this question of how do we determine what is the target? You know, what is diversification? We kind of drafted a statement of what a diversified economy looks like and we're gonna keep it open and then ask basically during the grant, how does how does your project, your program kind of match this statement? We can share that really briefly.
I just sent both of them around.
Okay.
Again, do you want to pull up the the statements?
I might read it out loud.
Do you want to hand it to me?
Sure. But it's basically economic diversification is economic development that supports a sustainable, lookable and resilient county. So it's sustainable and that we actively protect our public lands and preserve our community's natural resources. Livable in that we support the creation of year round, high paying jobs, a community that offers a high quality of life and economic mobility and resilient in that we foster a diverse mix of industries and a standard array of economic shocks. And it's kind of intentionally quite vague and wide open because we haven't done big public engagement and had the commission really weigh in on this. But it's a starting point that I think we can use this grant to research what people think could be a good fit and help us kind of narrow down what we're kind of on the industry mix side and wage side of this whole kind of question, what people apply for. Yeah.
So remind me, have you, as as the application window started or ended?
No, no, we are bringing this to the commission next week just for approval of like the overall program.
Okay, somehow I thought that there had already gotten submissions.
Our goal right now, we've got some great ideas from folks doing some public workshops and feedback forums. Our goal is to have the application go live July.
Yeah, so it's gonna be something that's dispersed.
Before you talked about two rounds, are you talking about having one round now or just half of it?
Yes, this year we're just doing a pilot. It's gonna be one round.
Yeah. How how well were they attended? I mean.
I had an evening workshop, about ten people. Yeah, and my lunch workshop, I had fifteen. Good, good representation of businesses and nonprofits. So I think, you know, one thing we really wanted to try and get right with this grant is to make sure that the eligibility and the criteria are inclusive of both sides of that in the area. And so it was really helpful to get that feedback. I think that we struck that balance. Because we do want to see some great proposals from nonprofits too.
Yeah, I just wondered, I I mean, it doesn't seem like a lot of people give the amount of money you're talking about. So I just worry worry that, you know, people might just have their heads down working at their business or so I don't know if there might be more of like a direct mailing outreach to or just even.
Yeah, that's a, that's a huge part of what we're talking about in this proposal that we bring to the commission is July, you know, July being off the stage.
Few months away.
Gives us, you know, two months and change to really build this up. Physical flyers will be part of it, but very large web presence will be part of it. We're going to create application materials, webinars, I think, cues to show people how to do it and connect them with grant ready resources if they need it. But this is something that's gonna be well publicized and there'll be lots of handholding and encouraging. So it's not, you know, if you're in the loop, you get the grants and if you're not, you don't. That's definitely not what we want the situation to be.
Yeah.
Cool. Well, I feel really good about leaving early unless there's like some burning desires and questions from the folks here today. Hearing none. Thank you so much. I felt like this was very productive and I am looking forward to you know, what a future kind of consolidated board structure could look like. And I will certainly send out kind of my thoughts ahead of time. So that y'all have a have an opportunity to provide input. But yeah, I moved to Jaren and don't have to second it. So, so yeah, thanks so much.
Good seeing you both online.